All right, we're starting. Is everybody logged in?
See.
No, no, who's not logged in?
I won't call them out, but two council members.
Okay, get logged in so we can get going.
We're down to one.
Then we'll get roll call.
And Rusty was not that council member. I did manage to get logged in.
And Rusty, I'm gonna remind you. I'm gonna remind you that if you have your hand up and it's been a while, just speak up because I can't see you and I can't see your hand.
Yes, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're not interrupting rudely. You're reminding me to acknowledge you, and that's my rudeness.
Well, the hard thing is, is with the single direction of the transmissions, I can't tell when I'm talking over somebody at times, and that's what I apologize upfront about.
No worries. I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready yet? Go. All right, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor LaBar.
Present.
Mayor Proton Keys.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Art.
Present.
Councilmember Zuluwaga.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, this evening, we're starting with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we have 3A, and we have Mr. Nakai here to recap the wildfire preparedness day. How timely was that?
Evening, council. Yeah, you're right. It was. Okay, let me do a quick recap. We had a pretty successful event. I think we had 320 logged visitors on our clicker, but we missed quite a few that were just cramming through the one of the bay doors. So we probably actually got close to 400 visitors that day. I think previous events, the most we ever had was around 150. So this was a stellar turnout. And, you know, we're here to tell you that a lot of that success is directly due to your support. This has made a difference in this event from past years. Okay? We were able to get around 60 new signups for peak alerts. As you know, there's been some issues with notifications on both the Hyde Park and the Mills Ranch, and getting signed up for peak alerts is the easiest way to get around those. We had all of our first responders on hand to answer all kinds of questions that the citizens had on how to prepare for wildfire in our, in our area and how to evacuate. And then one of the, one of the new programs that we introduced this year that the chief is very excited about are these free confidential and voluntary inspections of your home's exterior. So they got several pages of signups for this, and people can still go up to the fire station now and, and ask for a free voluntary confidential inspection of your home's exterior. Let's see. So I want to, I want to thank a few folks that helped put this together. First and foremost, Bonnie Sumner and Susan Grennan. My, my partners in crime, if you will, they, they have both, they're both experienced at, at this type of an event, especially with the Firewise community. And especially when I wanted, had a dumb idea, they would, they would tell me, Mike, you can't do that. Okay, so it was a big help. Let's see, we, we also want to thank some of our somewhat sponsors that gave us good discounts on expenditures. First and foremost would be Carl Anderson and Spence Swan for discounts on banners and printing. That, that helped a lot with our expenses. We want to thank some private property owners who allowed us to hang banners in the weeks prior, that'd be Walgreens Community Partnerships and Pete LaBar for allowing us to hang banners on their property. We want to thank The Courier and the Mountain Jackpot for interviews and articles that they did. Bonnie was instrumental in getting that set up. And then what this allowed us to do was to not, not spend money on advertising because we were prepared to buy quarter, quarter sheet or half sheet ads with our flyers and stuff. But I think we got good coverage with the articles that they did on the event. So we wanted to thank them. Also, we want to thank Grace Johnson of the city, as well as Renee Bunting of Taylor County Sheriff for their skills in social media, which I have none. And so they were able to get the word out on multiple platforms multiple times, and we think that was also made a big, made a big help. Let's see, I have some numbers for you. On March 3, you folks agreed to fund this event with $2,300. We spent $675 on banners and $917 on printing for a total of $1,592. We received $200 in donations, bringing the balance to $1,392. So we, we came in roughly $1,000 less than, than what was expected. And then just a couple items as far as where the future holds here. We, I'd like to maybe take some of the documents that we had that were very popular and get electronic copies of those to Grace and see about putting together a page on the city website where folks that either missed the event or people that are new or people that just, you know, all of a sudden there's a fire. Oh, do you work and I find information? So we just want to post a lot of this stuff where people can, can get to it. And then lastly, the, the chief and I think this is an event that we probably want to do probably every two years right now is our thinking. If the public, if the fire situation changes and the public wants more, we probably ought to give it to them. But for right now, we're thinking every two years. I have for you a thank you letter from Chief Lambert, as well as the Netco Board of Directors, which I'll give to the city manager and a copy to the mayor.
Thank you.
So yeah, with that, I wanted to see if any of my partners here had anything else.
Again, I would like to reiterate thanks to your support as a city. It made an enormous difference to us to not only have the funds to do a flyer like this, which was everywhere. It was posted, more or less. So many people saw it that we advertised this to begin at 9:00 AM. At 8:30, there was a line to get in, which is amazing. And again, I want to thank Grace, she's still here, for all of her help in plugging us into the places that got the word around, which we've never had before. So I really want you to understand that the participation of the city now that we've never had before makes a huge difference. And it's really hard because we have snow and people say, why are you talking about fire? There is so much education that has to be done, and we need the cooperation of the city and your resources to make it done. Renee Bunting has been amazing in getting the word around. But I want you to know that in all of our meetings, we were very, very careful about spending money and not frivolously, frivolously spending it. We had a discussion about donuts, which was vetoed by me and Susan. Spend money on donuts. And for my part, being there, and I, I was at the Firewise table, but I also was in front of it to talk to people. And what I said to them is, tell me your concerns. Where do you live and what are you worried about? And there is so much helpful information that's there, but we have to get it out to people. And we have to cooperate with the county. We have to cooperate with the police department, the sheriff, Chief Tyler, with everyone who is into this. And I do want to give a big shout out to Don Moore, who, for those of you who may not have read about him, has this group called, let me get it. No Flow Co. It's basically at a fluorescent, and what they do as a group is actually literally work to help people mitigate their property, and then they have a party and they eat. And what we said to him is, we want you to come and we want you to find that person or people in Woodland Park who are willing to start an organization like this. And we have been working with him, and that's our hope, that somebody will start this because basically it's physical labor for people who can do it, for people who can't do it. And then they have fun and they like have nicknames and food and stuff. So that is what we are looking forward to in the future. So again, I want to thank you again for your support. Your support was crucial, and it made a difference. And I am hoping that this will go on, that this will not be a flash in the pan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions for me?
Counselor.
Just two comments. Well done. Two is, you got $200 in donations. I think you actually had about almost $1,000 initially, so. But my comment is, is it possible to work with the city to have a donate button for this from private citizens? So we don't have to look to fund it out of, out of the city funds? I mean, I think the enthusiasm I saw at the event and the amount of volunteerism and genuine interest from the community would lend itself to people to go, hey, I'll, I'll chip in 50 bucks. And I would encourage you to do it annually. If you had a rise from 150 people to 400, why stop, why stop the momentum? Until you've reached a curve of when you recognize you've got the sort of exposure that would educate more of the community. So just two suggestions.
Yeah, so the, this is, I think, the third or fourth time you've brought up funding this event through donations as opposed to taxpayer dollars, I believe. It, I don't know, I, I have a bit of a different opinion on it. I believe this is a public safety issue. I believe public safety is first and foremost this government's responsibility, and I don't think they should shy away from it in any way, shape, or form. Okay, if we can get, you know, donations, there's plenty of events that happen in this town that people volunteer their time and their funds to. I don't know. Like I said, you, you brought this up three or four times. I guess maybe, does anyone else on the dais?
I would like to say, Mike, that
Feel the same way.
It's in our job description, health, welfare, and safety. And it is our responsibility, and I think that we should be helping the citizens out if they want to do that. So if there's donations to be given, well, then that's how you buy the donuts.
Yeah, in this case, actually, actually, I forgot to mention, Netco actually paid for the coffee in the, in the cups and stuff, so they paid for that out of their budget.
But I wasn't on council at the time that $2,300 was
Yep, correct.
allocated to you. But I wish I was.
So, so, so if the rest of you don't subscribe to that same notion that we need to fund this through donations, maybe rather than me coming every two years to ask for funding, one of you that has this, you know, concern about wildfire in this community, we have a budgeting process, and that budgeting process happens every fall. And so we're basically suggesting we do this every two years. If one of you is interested in it, you can bring it to the budget, and you guys can discuss it in work session, and then we don't have to take up the people's time discussing the same topic over and over again.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We have item four additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. We have none. And five is consent calendar, and I would normally ask if we could take it all together, but I see there's some contracts in there, and I know I have some fevered contractual council members, so we're going to just start with 5A.
Hillary, I do want to make a comment.
Oh, sure.
And I'm sorry for interrupting, but on the last item, 5E, that was not in the packet that was distributed to the council members, at least it's not in the packet I received. And when I went to the website to see if there was an updated packet, there is no packet posted on the website. So I have never even seen item 5E.
I did. It was in my packet, and I also got it off the website.
And in addition, it was emailed. It was emailed to each council member when it was revised. Every council member received it in email.
I have not seen that. I'm at the website right now, and the packet is not there. I heard that there was an update. I did not see it in my email. I have the file. I downloaded it. It was 200 pages. Robert mentioned that a new one came out. It was more than two, about 260 pages. I have not been able to find that, and it is not on the website.
So we're gonna task Grace to check out the website and see if she can find it while Suzanne
Grace has the answer.
Okay.
Of course.
So it is on the website. Rusty, there were two meetings posted. One of them was the work session, and one of them was this council meeting. So maybe just double check to make sure you're not under the work session.
Hey, um, so Grace, I
I am staring at the computer.
iPad here, and when I clicked on it, it does show it's like 200 something pages, right? But, but it will only load like the first page is what I ran into. So it looks like it's there, but for some reason it's not loading.
Okay.
Okay, then, then we have two different websites. I'm pretty technically literate, and I don't want to get upset about it, but I'm staring at the
But I'm upset.
Thursday, June 2, City Council Meeting link, and the packet icon is grayed out. There is no packet that I can download.
Right there. It's under agenda.
Under agenda.
What was, that's the way it's always, always is.
I'll send you a link, Rusty.
And then you need to email to each council member in addition.
Yeah, normally there's the download the agenda. That's where I normally can go to it. When you click on it, it takes, it fork, the term is it forks you to a website that the packet is not available.
Okay, well, for the sake of minutes, since we're discussing item 5E, we're just gonna carry on with 5E for a moment for, for continuity for the meeting. So
Thank you.
Ben, real quick, is there a critical deadline then, since Councilmember Neal hasn't had the ability to? Did everyone else have the ability to review this? Yeah?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so my conundrum is, Rusty, you're the only one who wasn't able to review it.
Well.
Okay, well, I'll vote accordingly.
I've got some questions about it, so when we get there, let's
So I was thinking we would just do it now.
You want to do it now?
We can discuss it. And Rusty, if you, do you have the link to it now?
I'm working on it.
And what page is it?
I was gonna say, I'll look. I have not received a new email yet.
Hang on one second.
To you shortly, Rusty. I'm waiting for it.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And while, while Robert's asking his questions and while council's discussing it, maybe you'll have the chance to review it roughly, and you'll be able to make a decision. If not, get back to me.
I will try. Yes.
Okay. And please let me know if you do not receive the link.
I will do that also.
So it starts on one page in the back, like, just for simplicity.
I'm working on it.
64, it starts on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ben, my question is a couple here. I see is a number of different options or folks we can use for this. And I see their rates. What is the anticipated, anticipated cost that you see with the workload that we have now that we would be, need to outsource these individuals? And what would that cost come to as a total?
Yeah. So it's a good question. The, the main projects that we had to get these, get this RFQ posted for because we need on-call engineers to execute a couple of these projects. So the first one is the MMOF sidewalk funds and the grant that we got from Colorado Department of Transportation. That's the project which basically analyzes all the ramps around town, the trails, does the design, and then moves forward with that. We have to have an on-call engineer or an engineering firm available to be able to do that work. We've also got American Rescue Plan dollars allocated for construction management services for the Kelly's and Baldwin projects. That's essentially money that we can use to, for them to, to go through, manage all the testing, all the, the day-to-day operations of those with the city staff will still be very involved. But that's workload that we can focus on other big projects within the city. So those are the two big projects that were, were kind of needed ahead of time for their, those come out to, for the MMOF funds, I believe. It was, it was around $100,000. And then for the construction management for both Kelly's and Baldwin together was about $200,000. So there's no allocated amount in these particular contracts, the way that these were selected, because you have to go through a request for qualifications process. It can't be cost-based. You have to select firms purely based on their qualifications, and that's a federal and state requirement. So if we want to use our on-call engineers for grant projects, we have to go through that selection process that way. And then you would develop task orders for an individual project. So say in our pavement management plan, we had identified that a street needed to be redone. What we would do is get task orders from those on-call engineers that we have, and then we would be able to select from that shortlist of firms and create the task order there. So really, it's a, it's a tough question to pinpoint exactly what the dollar amount is because, you know, I can say with, here's the road projects that we're gonna do the next year. It's usually 10 to 15% of the value of the road project. But say it comes up where we have a structural project that has to happen, like, for example, the analysis of the, the dish and the communication tower on top of the police department, that would be another task order that we could utilize these services for. So there's a range of, of services. They would all have to fall within the budgeted amounts that were allocated, but they're essentially the service, the engineering design service is part of that project.
Do we at any time want to use, or do we envision having in-house engineers to fulfill this, or is this always something you're gonna outsource?
So that's another good question, too. So just to give you a perspective about what it takes to design like a street project, because that's the one, or a water project, because that's what I've done in the past. So usually for a single street project, you have to have a licensed surveyor on staff that has to perform all the survey. You have a geotech that has to perform all the geotext. You either have to have those in-house, or you have to go out to solicit their resources. Usually it's anywhere from two to four engineers that work on designing a project, and that's their full-time job, just sitting in CAD, designing, going through all the stuff. That's something that we could do. It would be a pretty large expense, and I think the effort expended, it's usually more efficient to utilize the, the resources and just manage the projects than to design them in-house.
No more questions. Thanks.
Rusty, did you get the link yet? Rob, did we lose him?
Mayor LaBar.
Yeah.
Just because I know that Cindy Keating has her team here, and she also has Logan Simpson on the line. If council has any questions for any of them, Cindy has, would love to introduce her team.
Well, and I think what we'll do is, let's just carry on with this topic. Since Rusty's out, he can
I am back again now.
So Rusty, what I'm gonna suggest is if you haven't had time to review it, you're not gonna like my suggestion probably, but you, if, the quickest solution for the sake of the council and the audience that's here is just vote no.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like you all have read it or comfortable with it. I could either abstain or just vote no out of, out of the conscious. Either way, I believe my sensing is it will pass, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion on this topic then.
I'll second it.
Them to make the motion first.
Sorry.
So are we doing just E?
Just E.
Okay, gotcha.
And you can make it as
I'll make the motion. I make a motion to approve on-call engineering and land use development services contract between the city of Woodland Park basis, baseline, JR Engineering and Wilson and Company.
I'll second.
That was a tie.
When you'd read buttons.
Thank you, counsel. The motion has passed 6-0 with Councilmember Neal abstaining.
Perfect. Thank you, Rusty. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Let's not slow down the meeting any longer than I already am.
It's, it's not just you. It's all of us. We're notorious for that, right?
We are trade professionals. Do not attempt this at home.
So we're gonna move back up to item 5A. We could do A and B together if you all are comfortable, or we can just take them individually.
Can we include C?
We could include C if you all are comfortable with that, unless someone has a question.
We can do all three.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve items 5A, B, and C as presented on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Thank you, counsel. You may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion's passed unanimously.
Great. So now on to 5D, and that's approval of contract from Logan Simpson, and Cindy Keating is presenting.
Thank you, Lynn. Good evening. Mayor LaBar and city council members tonight with us, I believe we have Jana McKenzie from Logan Simpson. And then also, well, Jan is our principal and primary contact for Logan Simpson, and then also today we have our proposal review team, and I'd like to introduce them to you. And at the end, if you have any questions for them, I'm sure they'll be happy to answer those for you. Jerry Smith, Terry Baldwin, and Jim Rumsay. So there were three volunteers, community volunteers that helped on the view team, and then two staff members, myself, and then Brady Warner, our aquatics manager. So I just wanted to briefly go through the process with you that we followed in the 22, 2022 budget, City Council approved $75,000 for this project. It was included in the 2030 comprehensive plan as well as an action item to be completed by 2023. And so using the urban lead process that we have, requests for proposals were issued on March 3, and proposals were due on April 15, tax day. We had 75 vendor views. We had six interested vendors, and then we had two proposals that were submitted. The submissions were received from Valerian and Logan Simpson. Both submissions met all proposal requirements, so that moved them to the evaluation process. Both costs, both proposals were reviewed and evaluated by our team and then was suggested because the review process was so close that we conducted interviews. So we lined up interviews for both consultants. They were set up on May eleventh. We although Valerian brought a lot of energy and did a great job interviewing. Logan Simpson has the experience, the staff staff depth knowledge and then of course had just recently completed her twenty thirty comp plan. So our team, not unanimously, but we finally got there, selected Logan Simpson. The proposed contract which you guys have includes community and stakeholder engagement, planning context and community needs, vision, goals and policies, alternatives and priorities in a plan development. So tonight, our recommendation to you is to approve the proposal for the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract with Logan Simpson for all items outlined in the proposal. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Like I said, Jana from Logan Simpson's on Zoom as well and then my team too.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Well.
No, go ahead, Rusty.
Yeah, Robert and I did talk about this and I I am concerned that we are we are looking at awarding another contract to the same company when on two occasions, I've asked to see at least the draft of one of their project that they owe us. It's the municipal code review. I haven't seen that and I've asked for it twice. It was part of the one hundred thousand dollar contract that we had. Fifty thousand dollars came from the city. We did receive the twenty thirty comprehensive plan, so I've seen that document, but the one that really has a little bit more meat on it than an aspirational document is the municipal code review. We haven't seen that product, so I I'm very uncomfortable awarding a very large contract to an organization that as of right now has not completed their contract. They have it's can can we get a sensing on when we're going to see the second half of the previous contract?
I'm happy to respond to that. I do have that draft document in my office. Because of being new and staffing issues, we've not had a chance to really drive through that and bring it forward in a meaningful way to both planning commission and city council. I like I said, they they did deliver that. We do have it in our possession.
So the delay is not Logan Simpson?
No, it's internal staffing.
Sure. Very good. Thank you.
Rusty, do you have any other concerns you want to bring up?
No, I I just have a clear conscience. I have to vote for for this one way or another, and I haven't seen the quality regardless of who's at fault. And I guess it's not Logan Simpson's, but I would hope that we would have the wisdom to delay awarding this contract until the city council sees the quality of their work on a far more challenging document than the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was a feel-good document. There's no real teeth in it. It's aspirational. The municipal code review, that one is going to be controversial and and that's where I want to really see the quality of the work. So I guess I'm telegraphing my my request, which is to delay voting on this one. Otherwise, I would have to not support this particular contract at this point in time.
Okay, thanks. Robert.
Yeah, I am. I I'm uncomfortable with this contract for a couple of reasons. One, in working with Logan Simpson, I felt we had to pull teeth regularly with them. The engagement that we had hoped from them really was a they had in my from my read of it, they had an agenda that they wanted to present to us and in place over our city. And it took a lot of backwards and forwards to get it to be a reflection of the people. That contract was fifty thousand dollars out of the city's pocket. The other fifty thousand came from a grant. This here, which is even more of a of an aspirational document, we're spending seventy-five thousand, proposing to spend seventy-five thousand dollars of the people's money on this plan. And I I'm not convinced why we spend one and a half times as much as we spent on a comprehensive plan for the entire city on on this parks and trails. So I I think that it's great. We had an RFP, went out to seventy-five companies. I would certainly like a different perspective than the company that put together the twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And so I I'm not in favor of this contract.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't. I can't remember if Cindy said that wanted to be cleared as paid out of the American Rescue Plan dollars, not general fund dollars.
Yeah, I didn't say that. Thank you, Michael.
Oh, thank you for clarifying.
And Cindy, would you say that to Councilmember Zulu Agas' point? Would you say that this one costs more money? It's got to be a lot more detailed for a specific trail plan in the city than an overall comprehensive aspirational plan, as Rusty put it. I'm sorry, Councilman Neil, but it just just to maybe calm his mind about that, about why that might cost more.
Sure. Thank you for that question and I'm going to actually call on Jana to answer that for you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm Jana McKenzie with Principal Logan Simpson. So I appreciate your concerns about finances. I just want to say that the plan actually total is less than the comprehensive plan. And I can share with you our work plan, our hourly rates are less than what you've just approved out of the civil contracts. We have applied things to it. And if you look at what's done in other communities, because I we we have two or three of these going on at any one time. So we are pretty much expert in the field of this. It is a different team that goes into this than what was with the comprehensive plan. So we have some overlap with some people that were involved, but it's a different kind of effort. So yes, there is more detail. We get down into specific recommendations and cost estimates. And we try to figure out how to make an action plan that will translate to a capital improvements program over time. So when you get to that level of detail, yes, it does take some effort. The types of plans that we do, for example, there have been a twenty percent increase in labor and expenses over the last two years. So just keep that in mind. We also have contracts for other communities that range, city of Delta was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The city of Craig, which was done three years, four years ago, and Craig has fifteen thousand, thirteen thousand people, I think. No, they have more like nine. That was a eighty-four thousand dollar project and that was done three years ago. So I think we've actually given you pretty good value for the money and have tried to be very efficient in terms of how we use your budget to focus on the things that matter for your community as we work through this process. So if you want more detail on that, we have many references. We have very satisfied clients. We don't have anybody who doesn't had who has spoken negatively about our work in the past in terms of producing this kind of product. So I hope you can understand that and hope that you can approve this contract. And if not, then we'll, I guess we'll just wait and see what you decide you want to do. So with that, I'll turn it back.
And I do have a question for Jana.
Rusty, Kelly actually has one.
Go ahead.
If he has a question for her, let him go ahead.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
And Ms. McKenzie, and I hope you don't mind if I call you Jana.
That's fine.
I don't want to say anything negative negative against your your company, learning that the holdup is not with your company. It's it's with the the staff and it has a a very good reason for it being slow with the the person isn't new on board trying to, you know, juggle a lot of things. But in your opinion, is the the parks and trails proposal that you are offering, is that document going to be closer in content and makeup to the comprehensive plan or to the municipal code review in your opinion?
Both of those other documents are totally different kind of documents. Jen Gardner is a landscape architect and planner who's worked with us for several years and she's an expert at code, which has to do with writing regulations. This is not about writing regulations. This project, this project is about identifying specific things that need to be done in the community for programs and for physical improvements and then figuring out a strategy for how they might be funded going forward. Right? And that you will have the idea, the the opportunity to prioritize as you come up with your list later on how to how to make that work. So I would say it's not like either of them. So I can't say it's close to either. If it were closer to the comp plan, I would say yes, because it deals with the whole city from a physical standpoint and deals with the connectivity and it overlaps transportation and overlaps land use and it overlaps drainage and it overlaps all those things. It's that you deal with your public spaces. So I don't think I answered your question directly because I can't answer it.
I think you're comparing apples and oranges.
No, you had a very good answer and I appreciate the answer.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Case. Yes, I just wanted to to share the previous Parks, Trails and Open Space Master Plan was done in oh seven, Cindy, or eight?
Previous professionally completed master plan was in two thousand and seven.
That's that's what I thought. And most of the projects that are identified and designed and costed and all of the detail of how to develop those projects, most of those have been completed. And so it is not an aspirational document. It is a it is a plan to develop our open space, our trails and our parks that are not developed so far that the community wishes to develop. And so it isn't aspirational. It actually is a very solid concrete plan that we can work from and use in our budgeting processes from year to year and and look towards funding those projects. And that's what we used it for in the past and it's it's overdue. Actually, it's done typically, I think, every ten years. And so we have a lot of things on the horizon for our community to develop those amenities that are so attractive and that we all enjoy. And so I just wanted to share that with the council and with the community that it really is an action plan that is executed and very valuable for the budget.
Thank you, Kelly. I also wanted to add with that is that I do believe I can honestly say that our community has changed since two thousand and seven and their desires of what they would like to see in our community has changed since two thousand and seven. And then when it comes to funding sources nowadays, everything is looked upon regionally. And we need to be bringing in their region into our plan as well, so we can collaborate and get monies that can do that can support the city of Woodland Park, but also our whole surrounding area, which also affects the city of Woodland Park.
I'm going to just add to, who was it from Logan Simpson that the board interviewed?
We interviewed Jana and Taylor.
Taylor.
And give me a second to look at the names.
Christina.
Christina and who else, Jana?
Jeremy Cole.
Jeremy Cole.
Okay, so you had a number of people interviewed by a number of citizens who are taxpayers on the board. And they're the ones who made a collaborative decision to hire this company.
That is correct.
And then Jana, how many, if you could just guess for me, how many cities have you worked with collaboratively over the years?
Oh, gosh, probably forty. And I have, I'm just redoing Inglewood's plan, redoing Fountain, City of Fountains plan, redoing all these others. So people come back, did Greeley's three times and updates. So this is what I base a lot of my practice on is Parks and Recreation, not only the planning, but the design as well. So that is the focus of our firm as opposed to some other people who propose on these kind of projects.
Okay, and the board had access to all of your resumes and experience and and projects and examples, right?
Yes.
That was yeah, that was included in the proposal and there was also references that were included in the proposals and for both proposals.
Right.
And references were checked.
And they weren't the only company interviewed. The other company was interviewed as well and had the same opportunities.
That's correct. Right. I would also suggest, Mayor, if you don't mind me sharing as the liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I believe we had a unanimous vote approving this to bring it forward to the council. Correct, Cindy?
Well, when we first started, well, through the review, right, is me review group, we had a four-one vote. But we really did come to consensus shortly after that, that we would be getting the best product, the best service for the money that we'll be paying.
But the advisory board as a whole forwarded this on to the council for approval, correct?
Actually, the review team forwarded it on to council.
Advisory Board.
We did not put on it there.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Thank you for correcting me.
Maybe we should have.
All right, Robert has a question.
So I'd be, I'm going to preface my question firstly with this. If you look at page sixty-six of the contract, it says that consultants shall perform the work using that degree of skill and knowledge customarily employed by other professionals performing similar services in Denver metropolitan area. I would suggest we're a mountain community. One of my oppositions to this particular firm is their Agenda Twenty-One United Nations footprint that they've put on all of their plans, which have this idea of sustainability and these other globalist concepts they're trying to overlay into the smaller communities. I would like to ask those of you who selected this company, in your summary, you said that, what is it, Valenci, Valerian? Were very dynamic, engaged and exciting. Why did they not? What was the, can you explain where that is? Because I'm uncomfortable with this company.
And would you like to talk to the review board or would you like me to answer that?
Any one of you. Sorry.
So coincidentally, so Valerian is a much smaller company and it's like there are three distinct parts, three or four distinct parts that we're going to have to come together to get this project done, not under the same roof, that kind of thing. So I think what finally swayed us was the the depth and the experience of Logan Simpson. And as a side note, one of the principals with Valerian or with that group that that made a proposal is is the president of our Parks and Rec Board, Advisory Board. So if there was going to be any kind of, for me anyway, I had to really check myself before we started because I didn't want to review these with any kind of bias. And so experience, the depth of the people they have in their company is kind of what swung it for me.
And I do have one more question, Hillary.
There's one Rusty, there's one more comment here. If you hold just a second. Go ahead.
Absolutely.
Mayor LaBarre, council members, city staff, it was a pleasure to be asked to be on this. I have, through my working career before I retired, not only did I have to prepare proposals for people, but also I had to review proposals for people. And with my counterparts are saying what we looked at, what we experienced, we felt we went with the best company that had the depth, the knowledge, and they have worked in smaller communities and working on a project right now for a smaller community in Fountain, Colorado. And that is where we went. It wasn't an easy decision. Both these companies were very good. Let me say that both proposals were done very well. Also, when we received these proposals, each of us had to go online, go through a process, evaluate every question on the proposal. And that came to a, what you call a median score for every question and then a median average score per vendor. And in the end, the average median scores were very close, but again, we felt as a group that going with Logan Simpson would be our best in the overall process for this for the city of Woodland Park.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Zulu Agas, I'm sorry, I I missed, what was your concern? What was your concern with this company?
With Logan Simpson?
Yeah.
What was all through the process with a comprehensive plan? It I sense that we are really playing tug-of-war with them in terms of what they wanted to.
Sorry, sorry about you. On my, more specifically, you you mentioned something about what was it?
Agenda Twenty-One, the United Nations Sustainability, that's a whole imprint plan they want over communities. And if we as a community adopt those and we adopt these the governance over the way that we develop our community, and I have a huge problem with it. There's a lot written about it.
Did you read the the plan in here to see what they're doing? Did you have a problem with specifically the trails and? Did you have a problem with specifically the trails and the, and the actual things they were going to do in the community?
I have a problem with a company's ethos. And therefore, my, my, my concern is, we had other vendors added. I would like a fresh set of eyes rather than the same company who are very professional, they're very good, don't get me wrong. But they, I'd like a different set of eyes looking at our community rather than the same set of eyes that runs these cookie cutter processes. And, and I don't, I personally won't support it, but that's my concern.
Okay, now Mayor, can we move on? Rusty had one more comment.
Yes, um, and it's actually going to be a question directed to Kelly. Um, I do not want to penalize Logan Simpson in my vote. Um, I had discussed this with Robert and I was very upset with awarding a contract to Logan Simpson because they had not. Performed. And Jana, you have performed. It's, it's just got delayed somewhere else. So Kelly, I, this is where I think the liaison job becomes critical in my mind. I, I turn to you. Um, and, and I trust your judgment. You've got the budget or you've been monitoring the budget for your committee that you're the liaison. Um, I think your budget is seventy-five thousand dollars total.
Yes.
So you're comfortable with spending essentially all of your budget on this particular contract. And your faith in this company and um, the quality that they will deliver. It's worth it. I'm asking you directly as a council member to council member.
Thank you, Rusty. I appreciate your trust, um, in asking me to answer that question. Um, the seventy-five thousand dollars that's budgeted, uh, came from the American Discovery, whatever, that plan. And A R P, the American Recovery Plan, um, not that that makes any difference. Um, it is budgeted for this product and this product only. And um, I would suggest to this council that, and to you Rusty. The folks that will be working on this plan are a completely different team from Logan Simpson. It's not the same team we had before. And I just would like to comment here too, that I never felt like there was any driven agenda. And I saw plenty of community participation in the comprehensive plan. And I don't support any political agenda from any U N, whatever, um, doesn't belong here. Um, but Rusty, I do feel very comfortable. I feel comfortable with the folks that participated in the process. They're very particular and very thorough in their analysis in these three folks here and Cindy and. The Brady from the pool. Um, I am absolutely comfortable. It's an, it's an imperative document and it is very late in coming forward. Did I answer your question?
You did, and, and it's from the testimony that we received from the podium. I was inclined to vote no, and I had told Robert that I was inclined to vote no because I hadn't seen the other product. And I'm trying to apply critical thought, um, by judging the quality of their products. But um, in listening to you, the testimony, um, I am inclined to support this contract and.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be quiet from this point on, thank you.
I'm going to make one more comment and then we're going to go ahead and move forward with the motion for this plan. Cindy, when you get the final product, will it come before us again?
It will come before you for approval.
Right, so.
An adoption.
That's right. So we actually get to review it and have a say in it. So just a reminder, so if anyone suddenly sees that France is telling us what to do with our trees. We'll be able to say we don't agree with it and find something different.
Also, along the way with this process, though, there are stakeholder meetings, of course, right? And council is one of those stakeholder meetings, specifically, it's in the plan.
Very good. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion, please. I'll move to approve, hold on, my computer went to sleep, of course. I moved to approve. The contract from Logan Simpson for seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars to update the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan.
No second.
Uh, who was the second?
David.
Thank you, David.
You may go, counsel.
Very good.
While we're tallying the vote, I just want to explain to those of you who chose this company, uh, I respect your decision. Um, my vote reflects my overriding concern, so thank you for what you did.
Thank you, counsel. Um, Rob will put it up there in a second, but the motion is passed six one. Uh, council member Zuluwaka voting no.
If I may, before I leave, thank you for your support. Thank you for the discussion tonight, but I really want to thank. These guys for all their time that they put in and their professionalism, because it was hard when you had. A friend or a chairperson as a business that's proposing and you really want to be able to give them that business. And they really did it, um, unbiased and they did a great job, so thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for your time. All right, we're on to item number six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. I do not have a sign up sheet.
I have it ma'am, I'm holding on to it because it's for an agenda item.
Okay, uh, what about Zoom?
Okay, then it's a different item. It's, um, Mary Jo Larson would like to speak regarding the D D A. I thought it was the agenda item.
Okay, so it's a not on the agenda item?
No.
Okay.
Okay, the reason I'm here is I'm Mary Jo Larson at two hundred West Midland Avenue, which is the cowhand. And um, I'm chairman of the Downtown Development Authority. We have a new council and a lot of new staff. And uh, next month will be the um, end of my term. And I just wanted to share some information about the D D A. I think I have three minutes, right? Okay, um, I have been on the D D A for twenty-two years since it started. And when we first started, we spent every Tuesday at seven thirty in the morning till nine o'clock, trying to put this together. We had some, uh, we had a great attorney that helped us understand the TIF, which is a tax increment financing. We had um, a lot of good support through him and we've had our ups and downs. I'd like to tell you some of the projects that we did. And at one time, we were considered one of the better D D As in the state because of our projects and how successful they were. And that would, uh, the Dinosaur Resource Center, Tractor Supply. Um, there is um, the movie theater, the dollar store, the auto parts store, the microtel. The hardware store, the um, human bean and car wash. The tractor supply, Big O tires. And most of those were, would not have been able to come to Woodland Park had it not been for the D D A support. In helping them along the way. Each of these projects was a separate contract. So it depends on what they brought to the community, how much TIF fund they received. And they were all successful contracts and projects. Most of them are about, some of them have ended. And most of them are about to end. Um, the um. After all of those good things, um, we got the cog car, the D D A got the cog car. And I know to some, it's yay or nay, but it was a gift. And it was paid, the move was paid for by a, a citizen. And the D D A is now transferring the ownership of that cog car in the wagon and horses to the historical society. So that they can use them and maintain them and manage those, so it won't be a hassle to the city. And um, the Woodland Station has been our real challenge. And I'd like to say that my name is on the contract from the saddle club that sold the D D A. To the D, or that sold the Woodland Park Saddle Club to the D, to the city and then consequently the D D A. So I have been a part of that since the beginning. And um, I would really like to follow through with that. Project and try to see that developed before I'm done. I, you know, I, I just would really like to complete that. And be a part of finishing that. We do have um, an interested developer. And now I do believe we worked with them for, this will be our third year. And I do believe that they do have the funds and some power behind them that they can do this project. Um, I know that they're working with some local. Landowners around that, and I think that they'll manage to get that work through. I would, they, I plan to have a contract on July fifth that we can look at. And then at our next meeting, if any of you would like to come, we do have a new presentation by some other interested developers. So all of a sudden, we now have two on the table and I'm, I'm glad for that. Hopefully that'll make it better. And I would like to say that as per Sally Riley, we have had twenty-four different proposals. For that project and all of them have fallen through. They just, it, the, the land is not big enough to make it really cost prohibitive for these developers. To um, come in and make something for our community that really is desirable. I do think that with these added properties will give them a size that they will have more room to do that. I don't know if, uh, any of you have any question? I would like to answer them for you. Um, uh, you're new to it. I don't know if you'd. Have anything to say or not.
So one thing that we discussed, uh, Mary Jo, about council, when we have public comments with items not on agenda. Our job is to listen to the public and say, thank you very much. Um, if it is an agenda item, then council can get into discussion on the topic.
Okay, that's fine. And it, I don't think that it was on your agenda item. I just wanted to inform. So I hope I didn't step over any boundaries there.
None whatsoever. Okay, yeah, thank you very much for that informative discussion on your part.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary Jo. All right, very good. Counsel, we have seven unfinished business, none. Now we're on to item number eight, ordinances on initial posting and eight A. A approval of ordinance fourteen twenty-three. And Karen is our presenter.
I'm here for a few items, so I apologize. I'm kind of taking a moment to set up shop.
That's okay, because I'll remind counsel, this is initial posting, initial posting only.
Exactly. So the request this evening is to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-three, series twenty twenty-two on initial posting. And uh, granted, and it's a, it's a request, um, or the ordinance. To potentially grant a conditional use permit with a site plan review. For the purposes of allowing a tow company to construct and utilize a commercial building with vehicle storage area on lot one. Sunny Glen Retreat subdivision filing number two, also currently known as twenty-seven thirty Mountain Glen Court. In the community commercial zone and asking you to please set the public hearing for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Very good. Initial posting, counsel. Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Rusty, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank Karen for the presentation and uh, the due diligence in working with the. The developer. Anyway, to, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-three, series twenty twenty-two on initial posting. Granting a conditional use permit. As written in the agenda, setting the public hearing for June sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. Counsel, you may vote.
Um, council member, thank you.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
Great. Now we're on to item nine, public hearings, nine A's, approving, approval ordinance fourteen twenty-two. Karen is also our presenter and I will remind everyone, this is quasi judicial, so stay on topic. And I will forget to ask the public.
Rob, I don't see the share screen.
And I see we also have Mr. Howes here in the audience, so.
I'm getting there, sorry.
It's okay.
So, um. Thank you. Um, the request this evening is a, a public hearing related to conditional use permit number twenty-one dash zero zero three. It's a request by Skip Howes, the applicant in the Tammerack Land Company, who is the property owner for a conditional use permit pursuant to code section eighteen. Point zero nine, point zero nine zero, point G, point one, contractors and construction services use. On four point two two acres in a portion of the west half of the southwest quarter of section twelve, township twelve south, uh, range. Sixty-nine west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, line southwest of Tammerack Tech Park filing number two. And line northwest of Tammerack Tech filing, park filing number one. And it has an address of ten ten Research Drive located in the service commercial zone. So, uh, the purpose of this item is a conditional use permit to bring an existing non-conforming use into compliance. And it was actually the request for a second driveway on the east ended subject property, uh, that triggered the C U P application. Um, as we, um, oh, and to help orient, um, with the overall map of the city of Woodland Park. Um, you know, we have our distinctive horseshoe and then highway sixty-seven goes off to the north. Um, it is this little blue dot up here in the northeast corner of the screen. Um, and then on the first slide here, we have an aerial that also shows the location of the subject property relative to research drive. Which comes off of State Highway sixty-seven. Um, in this particular area, uh, there's a variety of zoning districts and other uses. Um, it is this purple piece outlined in yellow is a subject property zone service commercial. Uh, these white parcels, uh, that are surrounded by a darker black boundary are actually outside city limits or county islands here in our community. Uh, to the south is the planned unit development of Stone Ridge, which has been developed with some, uh, single family homes. And then um, to the northwest, we have um, Sundance and um, Shining Mountain. P U D, single family or residential to uses also. Other residences to the west, this one, uh, white island immediately to the east is actually the bus barn. And then um, a little bit further to the north is um, the location of the police station. So that's what's going on in and around that area. Um, with regard to the history of this particular property, the, there's one building on the subject property that was constructed in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, the property was annexed into the city of Woodland Park in nineteen ninety-seven. And for whatever reason, zoning did not happen at the time of annexation. It was a number of years later in two thousand and four, when the area was given a zoning designation of service commercial. And it was even back at that point where, uh, the applicant was contemplating. Um, potentially dividing this property into three parcels at some point in the future. Um, that has not transpired since two thousand and four. I think it's still a, a concept that they're entertaining at some other point in the future through a separate application. And so this particular slide shows a couple of photos taken in two thousand and four showing the existing conditions of the property. Uh, you can see the, the building that was on site since ninety-three. And uh, a, a greater point to point out is that, um, there was no outdoor storage at that point in time. And then, um, like I said, even with that establishment of the zoning. And then, like I said, even with that establishment of the zoning district, the next step in terms of actually getting additional use permit in place at that point in time was not taken. So this is, the contractor services have been operating there since prior to annexation, and we're finally circling back around to close all those loops with regard to this. The most recent conversations started in December of twenty nineteen around seeking that conditional use permit. Things got waylaid a little bit by COVID. And then it was this past December twenty twenty-one, when the applicant was seeking that second driveway on the east end of the property that they came forward and started submitting this application for our review and processing. So when we drive into more detail about what's going on on the site, in this particular slide, you can see the bus barn here in the bottom right corner. Research Drive comes in and around the south and west side of the property. The driveway entrance is over here on the far west side that closes to the building, and that's the existing driveway. There's some of the outdoor storage that they have been doing without benefit or permit is some concrete rubble that has accumulated. There's also some other existing equipment in around the site. And just as a point of reference, we have the Lloyd Gulch here off to the northeast side of the property. The proposed location for the second driveway is down here on that southeast corner of the, the property. So my next series of slides relates to just some other photos that were in the staff report to help orient to the, the property. So starting at that southeast corner of the property, this, the, the top picture, and we're going to circle along on Research Drive. You know, as we kind of come around the corner of the property on that lower photo. Then rounding that corner down here, you can see the entrance into the property and the, the building hidden in the, the pines. And the bottom slide is, you know, right there at the entrance into the property. So looking into the property at the actual entrance point, you can see clearly the building that's been there since ninety-three. And then this last photo is at the northwest corner of the property, looking back in towards the, the driveway and the buildings back in this particular area in the center of that, that lower picture. The next series of pictures are what's going on on the site itself. So you can see some of the concrete rubble that has been stored there adjacent to Lloyd Gulch, some storage of some soil. Just, just kind of the overall layout with some other terrain issues, soil storage, the picture on the far right, you can start to see some of the equipment that's out there on site. Other things that have stacked up around the existing building. And again, just some other vehicles and things that are stored there on site. Last series of pictures, just finished taking a look around there. Interesting to note, the center picture here on this slide, you can see through the pine trees back to Research Drive in the distance. So that stand of trees is important from the concept of talking about screening of what's going on the site from the, the street adjacent to it. So again, just recap the overall site, what's going on there. So that you can just, just touch base on that again. And so the next two slides are from the applicant looking at zoning and CUP, conditional use permit compliance. So this particular property is, or this particular slide is oriented slightly differently, that the Research Drive comes in here along, oops, excuse me, along the eastern side or the right side of the screen. And then around to the, the south end of the property, the green bubbles around the, the perimeter of that property are showing some of that landscaping and open space that are required to be on the property. The existing building is noted. And then with the topography, you can see there's a natural depression here closer to, to Lloyd Gulch. And in this next item, or this next slide, that's where he's showing more detail with regard to the proposed second driveway there on the, the eastern side of the property. With this particular side, so is a solid screening fence along the property line. And that was proposed to be at six feet in height. Unfortunately, our regulations require fences in excess of thirty-six inches that are solid to be placed back on the setback line, which would, in this zone district, actually put them fifty feet in on the property. This was a point of conversation at the planning commission. And in the conditions of, associated with their recommended approval, they made a recommendation that that fence actually be twenty-five feet off the property line. So that would put it here in the, the middle of, of that setback line that's shown on this page from, from the property line. And then there's also an illustration of what that solid screening potentially looks like. So when we look at the approval criteria associated with conditional use permits, we need to explore, you know, the need for this at this particular property or this location and mitigation of any impacts. We note in the staff report that this site was developed prior to annexation in nineteen ninety-seven. And I just remind you that we are taking care of an existing non-conformity with this particular request. With regard to public health and welfare, this is a relatively low intensity use that can be contained on the site as well as buffered and screened from surrounding uses. Property values, this use was in place or has been in place for over twenty-five years. Other uses have developed around it, including the homes in that area. So that does not appear to be adversely impacting each other. And then is this in harmony? And there's no, 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 no known conflicts with neighboring properties related to this current use. The next criteria relates to city plan compliance. And there's a couple of policies and goals noted in the staff report where there, this is in conformance with those. But this was a point of discussion at Planning Commission with regard to a mapping difference between the twenty-ten and the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan. The property, the subject property on the, on the left map is here that I'm trying to show my mouse around. And at that time, it was, I'm sorry, it's this pink one. It was flagged for other commercial use, I believe, was the designation. I don't have the key handy. I apologize. And then we went to twenty thirty, it got mapped differently and identified more for residential use. But I do want to note that this future land use map is just that, it's a guide for informing future development of the property. So in this situation, like I said, we're trying to take care of an existing use that's been there long before either one of these plans.
I can't hear you, sir.
If the property is sold, it can be residential at that point, because it's still designated residential in the future, correct? If it's rezoned.
If somebody wants to develop it as residential, they could use the comprehensive plan as support for changing zoning and developing it with residential uses. Yeah. So the next criteria relates to compliance with city regulations. You know, they are working towards compliance as part of this conditional use permit. They will be addressing existing stormwater runoff and addressing water quality associated with that, which gets them further into compliance. With regard to traffic impacts, even though there is a second driveway request, this is largely for easier site access, but there's no increase in traffic expected. For environmental concerns, that the site is relatively level, there's a little bit of grade to it, it slopes towards Lloyd Gulch. And the next comment really relates more to a point in the future, should this be platted or subdivided? That Lloyd Gulch may be platted as a separate lot in that future subdivision. And then just that other note that they need to mitigate their existing stormwater runoff and assure that the quality is intact. With regard to utilities, there is, that the existing building does not have water or wastewater to it. So at some point in the future, if there was a, a building permit requested for those that we have internal plumbing, those utility connections would need to be made at that point in time. There is the desire to place rotor millings on the ground, that the surface there that provides a better surface for some of their storage. And then helps with mitigating any potential air quality, you know, the dust is associated with them just running around on a dirt lot. And then again, just that need to continue to mitigate existing runoff or runoff from changes in the surface. Regarding public danger, there's no significant safety hazards. The Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District had opportunity to review this. They are comfortable with the proposed second driveway and just requiring a twenty-foot minimum width for that. And then finally, with regard to aesthetics, there's no changes proposed for the building at this time. They are looking to retain as many of the existing trees as possible, which helps provide screening, meet their landscaping and open space requirements, and then adding that fence to screen that, that outdoor storage. And then, of course, we are asking them to remove and clean up some of the debris that's on that site that's accumulated over the years. So the planning commission heard this in two pieces. So they held their hearings on March tenth, and then again on April twenty eighth, twenty eighth. And they found substantial compliance with the CUP standards. And they are recommending to city council that this conditional use permit for contractors and construction services use be approved with fourteen conditions. And so those conditions are enumerated in your ordinance that you have in front of you this evening. Specifically, that prior to November first, twenty twenty-two, the property owner must clean all litter and debris from the site. For example, the old truck, concrete and debris. Condition two, the final drainage report must be approved by the city engineer before a grading permit or zoning development permit can be issued. Condition three, a grading permit is required for surface changes or disturbances that exceed seventy-five hundred square feet in area. Number four, a single multi-use zoning development permit is required for the site improvements. These include water quality detention, surface changes with the addition of millings, the second driveway and the fence screening. A final concept plan for the site is necessary in order to issue this zoning development permit. Five, all current applicable fees are to be paid, specifically the stormwater fees based upon impervious area at the time the ZDP is issued. Six, final concept plans for the site shall be submitted that show location and dimensions for material storage areas and drive areas, equipment parking areas for rolling stock, water quality detention facilities, screening and fencing detail, details compliant with code section eighteen point four-two, twenty-five percent landscaping, ten percent snow storage. Number seven, hours of operation shall be limited to dawn, no earlier than seven AM, to dusk, no later than nine PM, Monday through Friday. After hours, emergency operations are permitted subject to emergency requirements. Eight, all exterior lighting, if any, shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of three thousand Kelvin or warmer and shall not exceed the twenty-five feet in height. Nine, uses shall not include any activity involving the use or storage of flammable or explosive materials unless protected by adequate firefighting and fire suppression equipment and by such safety devices as are normally used in handling any such material as approved by the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District. Ten, no smoke, odor, vibration, glare, or particulate emissions shall be permitted, which can cause damage to health, animals, vegetation, or affected properties beyond the parcel boundaries. Eleven, notwithstanding any conditions herein, this conditional use permit does not grant a noise relief permit, and the use slash business shall at all times be subject to municipal code section nine point four-one noise. Twelve, pursuant to municipal code section eighteen point three-three point one eight zero, at least fifteen percent of the parcel shall remain as open space. Thirteen, pursuant to municipal code section eighteen point three-three point one eight zero D, healthy existing significant trees shall be preserved to the extent reasonably feasible and may be used to satisfy landscaping and open space requirements. And then condition fourteen was added by the planning commission. They wanted to clearly state that it is the view of the planning commission that the front setback, as is applicable to a six-foot fence, should be reduced to twenty-five feet. So with that, the final recommendation is that city council move to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-two, series twenty twenty-two, based on the findings contained in the staff report and as presented at public hearings, in ordinance granting a conditional use permit for eighteen point zero nine point zero nine zero point G contractors and construction services use in the service commercial zone at ten ten Research Drive.
Council, do you have any questions for Karen or for our applicant, Mr. Howe?
Just wanted to know, Mr. Howes, did you have a comment on anything you would like us to know?
Question.
Skip Howes here for, and on behalf of Tamarack Land Company. Just a little bit of history, back in twenty thirteen, fifteen, there was a letter of map rep revision done, a LOMAR on the property where FEMA modified the floodplain and defined it as a more defined area along the Lloyd Gulch area. In that floodplain study and analysis, they took into account the existing surface runoff from the properties and within their jurisdiction. So the big issue we're going to be working with on our drainage and stuff like that is water quality. It's really close when you come to it, a lot of kinds, but the issue is basically water quality. The, really, the purpose of the second drive is to be able to have our gate further back in so that our tractors and vehicles pulling in can get off the road. Right now, the, the gate and the road we have, sometimes it takes a bit of a turn and blocks traffic. So this is kind of a safety issue from our standpoint to try to get this done. We did submit two plans. The planning commission asked us to do it in a, in a more definitive way. So we will end up kind of combining those two plans with the final concept plan. We'll bring in with our engineer, JPS engineering, a revised drainage plan that will show the things that are going to happen based on your action tonight. We may have some phased-in water quality issues that'll be proposed over a period of time, and that'll obviously be reviewed by engineering. Moving the fence to the twenty-five foot point was, was kind of an issue that gave us the ability to maybe be able to identify that area from property line to the twenty-five feet as, as open space and landscape area, and then we can hide everything we have behind it rather than having the fence at fifty feet and then having parking in front of the fence that's not secured and that type of thing. So we got some great guidance from planning commission staff on that particular issue. Other than that, I have nothing to say unless you have particular questions.
Councilmember Case.
Hi, Skip. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Just a question, as far as the trees that are there, they do a really nice job of mitigating and, and screening that, that lot. You really don't notice that anything's back there with those trees. Are you going to utilize a lot of that and, and use those trees as your screen in addition to the fence?
Yeah, that's the intent. If, if you looked at the fit pictures that were there, when you saw the picture of the gate, the building behind, there was a row of trees planted to the left between that to the north. Those trees were planted by my dad when the building was built. They were brought in with a tree spade and planted, so they created that natural buffer or man-made buffer of trees. We're going to maintain that, are, we're going to adjust our gate a little bit so that we can get off a little bit better. And then from the south side of the existing or slightly modified gate, that's where we're going to kick the fence back to the twenty-five foot point and then run around to the curve and, and tie that into the fence along the bus barn area.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Council, any further questions? Rusty, any questions?
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Howes. First, I want to start off with a comment to, to thank Karen in the planning department, the planning commission, and you, Mr. Howes, because when I read through both of the packets from the two planning commission, it looks like there's a lot of give and take on both parts. So I, I thank you for your working with the planning commission. I think they did an outstanding job of listening to the concerns of the citizens that live over there. That is the access road to my house, so I drive by your property every single time I go home and every single time I leave my house. So I have noted a lot of the debris there, the old truck, the concrete. Some of us think of it a little bit as an eyesore. The fact that you have agreed to remove the, the major things that would be viewed as eyesore, I compliment you. Thank you for doing that on behalf of the, the one resident that did testify at the planning commission who lives across the street. Removing that in combination with your fencing that you've agreed to. Removing that in combination with your fencing that you've agreed to, and I think it was a wise decision to make it 25 feet versus the 50 feet. It's just conducive with that property and where your trees are. All the residents over there are extremely grateful for what you're doing to clean it up. And and I especially want to thank Karen for defining dusk and and dark. So our dawn and dusk so that we wouldn't have no confusion about that in the future. And also keeping, that wasn't a joke. Some of you got it. Thank you for keeping the noise requirement to keep the noise down. That honors the residents across the street from you all. And we are appreciative of that. And I think you did answer the one question. You're adding that second driveway for safety reasons because that turn is so close and where the the driveway would come up, I was concerned that you wouldn't have enough time to see anything coming out of there if they were coming out and and turning to the east. So you've looked at that and are convinced that that is a safer exit by adding that second driveway, correct, Mr. House?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, because that was one safety concern I had. I think it's an excellent move of what the city staff did with you and what you're doing with your facility. And I'm kind of saying this, hoping that generating a lot of yes votes for this ordinance. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for your comments and one of the interesting things about being in our industry, and we share the property with Lamb Excavating. And just for the benefit of emergency situations, Lamb Excavating is a backup provider to the city for emergency services. So that's part of the reason why that was in there. But unfortunately, as a as a home builder and developer and excavating group out in there, we have a tendency to collect stuff. And we have, we have, if you, in the original proposal that we had with definitions, we defined with staff, the definition of consumables, materials and equipment. And and the materials were things that are consumable during a project or something like that, and equipment are things that you might take to and from and use on a on a project as things would progress. So there's not a lot of places in town right now where this use is in place. So this is a good place for it between, you know, a collector's street and a floodplain. Happy to answer any other questions.
Counsel, if there are no further questions, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up for this topic?
We do not.
Did I?
And nobody on Zoom.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment for this topic. And we're going to go ahead and ask for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 1422, series 2022, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for 18.0209.090.G contractors and construction services in the service commercial SC zone at 110 or 1010 Research Drive.
I'll second.
Thank you, counsel. You may vote.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. Very good. Mr. House, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 10 or number 10, new business. We have, oh, sorry, on nine, we also had B, but that's been withdrawn. So now we're on to 10, new business, 10A, and our presenter is Amy Jacob for resolution 892.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This evening I come before you for approval of resolution 892, series 2022, a resolution by the City of Woodland Park, City Council, Colorado, formalizing the city's decision to opt out of the paid family and medical leave insurance program. On November 3rd, 2020, Colorado voters approved the Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Act, which established paid family and medical leave in Colorado to be funded through payroll taxes. This payroll tax would be split between the employee and the employer 50/50. The current rate that is proposed is 0.9% of an employee's wage. So it'd be 0.45 from the employee and 0.45 from the city. The payroll taxes would begin being deducted January 1st, 2023, and employees would be eligible to take leave January 1st, 2024. With this approval of the paid family and medical leave, the state developed the Division of Family and Medical Leave Insurance. They are in charge of overseeing this program. They've also set forth provisions for local governments to opt out of this program. In order to opt out of this program, the governing body, US City Council, must approve that. This does not mean that we have to opt out forever. We can opt in. You must opt in for three years at a time. If you choose to opt out, you have to vote on it every eight years. If we choose to, if you approve us opting out of this program, employees of the city can still opt in and pay those premiums themselves. So with this, staff would like to like to say that we would like you to approve resolution, resolution 8, resolution 892, sorry, to opt out of the family and medical leave insurance program.
Counsel, any questions?
I have one, Amy. So if the employee opts in, do they pay the the full percent, the full amount, or do or does the city require to pay the other half?
The employee would pay the full amount.
Just double checking. Yes.
And just to clarify, this does not take away the opportunity for an employee to take family medical leave. It's just that they don't have the insurance option through the state available.
Correct.
They opt in themselves.
Yes, FMLA or the Family Medical Leave Act, they are still eligible. That is a federal program.
Yes.
And it is 12 weeks of unpaid time.
Thank you.
And one other question, Amy, could you share why it is the staff decided that they preferred to opt out as opposed to doing it? Like, just to give us perspective on that?
You bet. So when looking at the requirements set by the state under the Healthy Families and Workplace Act, we are required to give each employee, full-time employee, 48 hours of sick time. However, the city almost doubles that time. Plus, we have our employees also earn vacation time. When we're looking, that was one reason. So we far surpass the requirements of leave for our employees. Our employees are still eligible for FMLA. There are slight differences between family and FMLA. The city also provides a short-term disability policy for employees for their own serious medical condition where they can be paid 60% of their salary while they are out for the 12 weeks. So we do have that program also. Also, when looking at our overall budget, and we just presented to you the compensation survey, the 0.45% that the city would contribute, although small, it adds up for each employee. We could use that in our overall budget for compensation. We will have increases in our medical premiums, so it will help pay for part of that potentially. We felt that it could benefit all of our employees more by investing the money in other programs with the city.
Rusty, any questions?
Not on this particular one. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up for this topic?
No, ma'am.
Anyone waiting in the audience? Are you on for this topic? You'd like to say something? Okay, would you mind coming up to the podium for us?
Well, I do have a built-in microphone.
I know, but it's it's for the Zoom audience and our recording.
I don't.
And just let us know your name, please.
Oh, my name's Eugene Houghton.
Thank you.
And I've lived here since we moved into our house December 20th, 2018. And I love this community. It's great and want to protect it. But I want to speak as a individual who, when it comes to the paycheck, I want as much of it as I can keep. And there is the national program and the other benefits they've discussed, but just to put in that part, a lot of your employees, of which I am not one, they want to take home as much of their paycheck as they can. So I'm speaking for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am. I just will have Amy mention to you, we did meet with the employees.
I did hold a meeting for all of our employees to attend so that I could explain what family is and get their feedback. Overall, the feedback of those who attended was they would like us to opt out also. They agreed with staff.
Very good. Counsel, anything further? Can I get a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 892, series 2022, as written.
I'll second it.
Thank you, counsel. You may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 10B, and that's to accept the 2022 compensation study as presented. What I'm going to suggest before we go into discussion about it is this is my own personal suggestion. Y'all can discuss it and decide what you want to do. But it is that I would like to give a consensus that we approve with the conditions that whatever questions you had that you felt were unanswered and the one particular slide that was not to some people's satisfaction with the numbers, that Aaron redo that slide part part, and then you guys submit your questions to Michael so that he can forward them to Aaron, and then they would be able to come back with the answers to those questions and be able to work on this compensation package at the same time. Because if we don't give them consensus, then they kind of are stalled out, and it would be good to get this in their budget process working along. And I don't know, Michael, if you wanted to add anything to that, because I don't say it so eloquently, but.
You said it just fine, Mayor. No, I, we would appreciate that for the council's consideration. The, what we're looking for is a consensus, really, and then this would show up as part of a supplemental package here in probably a few weeks. We have a few other things as well. But again, a reminder is that this is for the rest of 2022, for right now. And probably October, you'll vote on the move for 2023, and we'll have some more economic data looking forward by that point. And then 2024, you won't have to worry about for a whole year and change.
Right. I was just going to add on to that. It's really the the decision and the implementation comes with the budget, other than what you're asking for in supplemental for this for 22. So we have lots of opportunity to cuss and fuss and discuss and all of that stuff.
This isn't approving it.
Right. This is just, this is just accepting.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I heard. This is approving the fact of your study. I did hear Rusty express concerns of some pieces missing from that study. So I'm wondering whether your, your, what you're suggesting, Mayor, is that that be included in the study?
Right. I'd like, whatever questions you had that you felt remained unanswered, that you submit those to Michael, and Michael will give them to Aaron, and then they can come up with the answers to those questions for you as satisfactorily as possible.
So we're suggesting we approve the study with the inclusions of those questions that were not satisfied during the work study. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't think they're part of the compensation study. The study is the study. If you all have questions for implementation and then then you can take those up with the staff, and then as we implement and we go into budget talks, we can, you guys can have that data in order to make good, informed decisions. The study is the study, is the study. And the results of the study are.
I would like.
Go ahead, Rusty.
Yeah, Mayor LaBarre, I think what your suggestion, just looking for kind of a consensus that we are inclined to support it, but as you noted, I I thought it was lacking some information that's crucial for a critical analysis of the study and specifically the churn rates by by grade. I always want to see that so I know that we are doing something that solves a problem. And then I'll write up the question. It's very similar to what Robert was discussing, where we were going to be going negative in 2024. I would like to codify a little bit what the plan is or some of the language that Aaron presented to us so that somebody, you know, when this council is no longer here and somebody's reviewing, how could we have possibly voted for this, knowing that we are, we are spending more than we're going to get?
Well.
To see not.
It's, it's.
It wouldn't. 2024.
So by 2024, it will be a different council, and they will have different control over the budget. So no matter what we did today, they can take that away and hurt me. So we're not locked into that. So what I'm asking for is consensus to move forward so that staff is able to prepare the supplementals. And in the meantime, those of you that had unanswered questions or issues, you can either email the questions if it's simple enough, or I'm sure that Michael and Aaron would be happy to meet with you individually and go over your issues. But for the sake of staff being able to prepare the supplementals and being prepared to bring it back to us to consider for budget review, it's just a matter of sake of time and efficiency.
The supplemental is just 2022's.
Right.
And then the rest of the implementation will be considered with the budget process.
Right.
The study does not approve spending.
No.
So why don't we just give staff the consensus to move ahead with the supplemental?
That's what I was looking.
Let's this get ironed out so that Rusty's questions are satisfied, that mine are satisfied, and that we're like, I'm not in support of a study that says we're going to be $88,000 to that. Even though, notwithstanding Michael's comments about he expected it to be six figures, I'm just not supportive of, I mean, six, what what would 16% look like? 16 would give us to the to the midline, from what I understand. I haven't crunched the numbers, but what would that number look like if you did the the increase, incremental increase to 16%? Wouldn't that hit our midline on all of those numbers? And would that bring us to at least a neutral budget?
When we.
And once again, it's all, it's, I totally understand that we'll be doing this year by year. I totally get that, but.
Excuse me.
I said, I'm sorry.
I know.
Go ahead with your thought, Robert. I'm sorry.
Mayor, some of us, some of my fellow colleagues on council make it difficult for those others on council to express what's on our mind. We don't all share the same point of view. So I think it's a great study. I think there are some points that need to be completed on it. I'm fine to say, go ahead and prepare a supplemental based on some of your initial findings. But I would suggest that we bring this back. It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect your implementation of this for us to get it right. And if we bring it back next week or next council meeting, then you've got a council that goes, yeah, this is a good document. Otherwise, why did you have a work study to show us this if you didn't want our input? And for us to just rubber stamp it without you reflecting on some of the pieces that we suggested would be disingenuous.
And if I could, I think that's.
I was cut off because I wanted an opinion from our city attorney when it says to the word except, when we vote to accept. When it says to the word except, when we vote to accept the comprehensive study, I'm not sure exactly what that term, accepting the study, means. Are we bound to the levels that we saw in the study? Or are we just saying we accept, yeah, that was a good product, good briefing? So Jeff, when we use the word except, are we locking ourselves into those options that were presented to us? Because I think Robert has some valid concerns about is, does it need to be seventeen percent? I'm concerned with, you know, we're being pes, we're being very pessimistic on our revenue forecast, and we're assuming that it's going to be better and therefore in twenty twenty-four, when we are actually short, our revenues are less than our expenditures based on this recommended salary adjustment. I don't want to be locked in, or any council is locked in, that we accepted this study if it means we're locked in. So Jeff, could you comment on what the word except does mean?
Well, I think this conversation is putting on the record what you all mean by accept. I think that's what you're talking about, is what do you mean by accepting this? And if you want to qualify that, you are doing so.
Okay, so by having this dialogue, we know we are not locking in the numbers that were presented yet.
Yeah, and furthermore, you can't limit the legislative discretion of future councils anyway.
And remember, Rusty, the budget is always theory. It's a projection. So, so they're giving us an idea of what they project. And then when we finally get to that space and time, they're either way off, right on, or somewhere in between, and then it's our authority to accept or decline it by vote. This is just consensus to say, yeah, looks, looks okay. Here's our concerns. Come back with the answers to these questions, if you would please, and, and carry on with producing the supplementals for our review, keeping in mind the questions council had and the discussions that you all individually can have with Michael and Aaron.
And if I may, Mayor, and Councilmember Neil, if it helps, perhaps look at it a different way. We were looking for consensus around the, the concept, the principle, perhaps of this phased approach to market adjustment and getting us back up there. If you all are comfortable with the concept, and I, aside from being short a few data points, I, I'm not hearing any discomfort with the concept.
Right.
Which is good.
Well, Michael, that's, Michael, can I clarify what you're saying? There were two options in the presentation, the seventeen percent line versus the incremental. We are talking about a consensus on the incremental approach, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah, I didn't hear, but council did. The, the incremental versus all at once. Right, yeah, incremental versus all at once is staff's recommendation. We are not recommending seventeen percent all at once, starting next month.
Okay, and that's what I simply want to be a part of this record as we are accepting this study.
Right, and as Jeff said, you know, this council cannot bind other councils, you know, unless there are resignations, this should be the same council by the time you all get the chance to decide on the final phase of this plan about October of next year. So there, you will have, it seems like at this time, you all will have the, the authority to make that call. And the, be, being a longtime fifteen-year budget veteran, the only thing I can promise you on these numbers is that, that they are wrong. They will change, and they, that's, that's the only thing I can promise you for sure. But you, you certainly will have the authority at, at different points to, to adjust. And by state statute and just general good governance, we will pass a balanced budget every year. We have to. To do so, otherwise would be very bad and illegal. So we, we will ensure that that, that number is in the black rather than in the red. So for what that's worth.
Thank you for asking. Rusty, an audience member said, could we do that on the federal level? Mayor, I will just offer my consensus to move forward. All right. Counsel, general consensus? Okay, very good. All right. So moving on to item ten D, we have discussion and approval of transferring a thousand from city council's budget. I was going to let councilmembers, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped C. I see the time on the clock, and I'm just. Is everyone okay with going four more minutes to nine o'clock before, okay? So I'm sorry. Ten C, approval of resolution eight nine three, and Ben is presenting.
Thank you, counsel. This is a pretty easy one. This is a approval of resolution eight ninety-three, authorizing the sale of a permanent easement to the Colorado Department of Transportation for sidewalk improvements in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. This is basically a very small easement section that they need for ADA ramp improvements in twenty twenty-three, right next to Burge, Burge some park. They need to expand the ramp out to connect it, and they don't have an easement to, to perform the construction there. And so they're offering a sum of fifteen hundred dollars for that easement.
Okay, counsel questions? Rusty, any question?
No.
Is that a fair value for easy?
No, I think I heard there must have been a modification to that.
Rusty did have a comment, sorry.
Rusty, the question was, is that a fair value? Fifteen hundred dollars, is that a fair value for that easement? And Ben was trying to answer that.
And sorry, I, I'm not a real estate. Sorry, I'm not a real estate expert, so I can't speak to if that's a fair value or not, but C dot has a dedicated team of real estate experts that, that provide that, that offer.
Okay, and now Rusty, you had a comment that you were making.
All I was saying, Mayor LaBarre, was that it, it appears that there was some sort of a change to it. I didn't see the change, if there was one. I thought the packet had sufficient information that I'm prepared to vote on that one.
I'd be happy to speak to the change.
Sure.
So there was an option in there to donate this easement as part of interagency coordination. And so the way that we set up the resolution before was to provide that option to donate.
Okay.
If the council elect to do so.
Okay. All right, counsel, are you comfortable with it as written and ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Oh, and public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this? Suzanne, do you have anyone on Zoom?
No.
Very good.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution eight ninety-three as presented.
I'll second.
Ben has assured me he will not spend it all in one place. It'll buy us two square feet of asphalt patches here.
Suzanne, did you get my vote? Because it disappeared before I could hit save.
I did not.
Okay, let me get.
And I did not get the. Suzanne, I did not get the voting window.
Came back.
We're good?
Yep. Thank you. Did you get it, Rusty?
It flickered and it went away.
I do not have it. I don't, I do not have a vote from Councilmember Neil or Councilmember Ott.
Yeah, it did, the voting window flickered and disappeared. I do not have it.
I have Councilmember Ott. Would you be willing, Councilmember Neil, to just verbally say how you'd like to vote on this?
Yeah. Yeah, I voted in favor of it.
Hey, I will check that box. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
And Suzanne, if you could withdraw the voting mechanism, it's locked up my screen, actually.
Maybe when you send us the vote again, it'll undo it for him.
Yeah, if you could try that, Suzanne, because it has.
Okay, we'll try for the next item.
So for our ten D, it was the discussion and approval of transferring a thousand from city council's budget to the police department budget. And Councilmember Connors.
Would like to move it to a future date because we've applied for disaster relief, and we'll see how much we get from there.
All right.
Thank you.
We're removed, we're just withdrawing that.
Just withdrawing it for right now.
Very good.
If we get to disaster relief and it isn't enough, then we can think about doing something.
Okay, we are on to item ten E, which is request to defer the transfer of Woodland Station property from DDA to city on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And I see that Neil, Neil and Zuluwaga are presenting. Yeah, and it is nine oh two. Counsel, do you need a break? Okay.
Oh, yes, yes.
We are going to do a five-minute break. So back at nine oh seven. Item ten E. And it was brought to the agenda by Councilmember Zuluwaga and Neil. Would one of you like to present?
Rusty, you can start. I, I'm going to go ahead and start this, so thank you very much, Mayor LaBarre. When Robert and I first discussed placing this on the agenda, we were aware of one development project for the Woodland Station property. Subsequent to when we asked this to be put on the agenda, we have learned that there is a potential second project. So some of my wording is going to be evasive because we don't know which project could be the project that the DDA board approves. With that introduction, using the initial project as a basis, the discussion that took place was with the Mike Williams group and their project in talking with some of their team members. The, the concern was brought forth by the investors that they were worried about the current development and disposition agreement that is currently in place, which has a clause in it that the city council has the option to take Woodland Station. That's the, the one piece of property that this pertains to, the Woodland Station. It could take that property back on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, which is only a year and a half from now. The investors were concerned that they could be, be through the first few phases of their project, which is the design, the architecture, but they would never have broken ground. And at the point that the disposition development agreement gives the city council a cho, choice to take the property back from the DDA, they view it as a risk. They could be working for a different boss. So what Robert and I wanted to do was merely ask the city council, because some members are very familiar with the documents that pertain to the downtown development authority and Woodland Station specific. There are some new council members that may or may not have knowledge about the document. things happening on the property that were moving towards breaking ground, starting construction, et cetera. I would be very surprised that any council would come in and take the land. That just doesn't make reasonable sense to me. And this is my opinion, but I, I, just to say my position while I have the microphone and hopefully I won't interrupt again or say anything again, can't promise. I would, I would just say that we look at this when the time comes. And I'm sure our attorney would schedule that with enough time for us to consider it and do the proper documents in order to extend that deadline with that document as we did before. We did it pretty hastily last time because it came upon us quickly. We were at the table in the city manager's office with the council and several other folks, the attorney, DDA's attorney, and and made it so, so that they could move, keep moving forward. There were some viable projects at the time and it made sense for that to happen.
Very good. So the reason this topic is before you, Councilmember Neil and I are bringing it before you is that the one of the potential investors is talking quite seriously about doing a, a project here. The next phase for them is to spend several hundred thousand dollars of their own money to get this process moving. And they want a, to enter into contract with the DDA. They know that it, that there's this caveat that if the project is not completed by December 31st, 2023.
It's not that the project be completed.
Well, significant completion, you know, exact language is, is as was stated, substantial completion. They have already said quite clearly, this is a five-year project. So they don't want to go in knowing that there's this damocles sort of Jan, December 31st, 2023 over the property, knowing they're doing their, their next phase of due diligence, spending quite a lot of their own money on it. So that's why it's before us because they will be bringing that to, to the DDA, a contract as we all got an email this, this last couple of days or last, last yesterday. So that's, that's the background of what this is. And one thing that I think is also worth bringing up, Councilmember Case, you perhaps could add, put some light on it. I know that you have been outspoken with the desire to close the DDA. What's, what's the pros and cons of that thinking, given the fact we've got an investor here?
I'm gonna.
Can I make a point of order that we not get off topic here?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. That is totally off topic. Wanting to close the DDA is not the same topic as what's on the agenda.
Okay. I would suggest it, it could be, particularly in the discussion of it.
Not in, not, it is not in the same realm as either extending or deferring a right to re-enter.
Very good. And if we need to bring it up, it'd be, it would be a good conversation to get the full picture of this so that we see what it looks like for this, for the city. Because you're talking about the city's interest and you're talking about the city's interest of the potential of taking it back and having that as a lever and recognizing that if we take it back, there is no influence of a DDA's ability to work with an investor and offer any.
Yes, there is. It's still in the district of the DDA. Even if the city re-enters the land, it still remains in the district of the Downtown Authority. So even if the city took the land back, the DDA can still offer a TIF to a builder. They wouldn't be completely blocked out. It's just whether the city owns the lot and determines whether we put out things for contractors to submit proposals, whether we would decide to sell the land. And if we decided to do proposals, the, the DDA can still be involved in that. They're not blocked out from participating. They would be blocked out from participating if we decided to sell the land. But then somebody's still buying it within the district too. So it's not a all or nothing. So, and, and I'm going to just speak on the topic briefly. I, I will never defer away the city's rights on a project like this because talk is cheap. If I see something come forward that is a legitimate proposal that is solid and sound, then I am absolutely 100% willing to, to entertain that and extend this right to re-enter. But until that actually occurs, and that is a, a year from now, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna just give away the city's right. May I? Sure. So I just have one. Substantial development is a subjective word. We could all decide that they put all the money into it. That's subjective. I mean, that's substantial enough. So I have to agree. I'm not comfortable giving away this, this idea right now. I mean, bring, bring it back to me in 2023. And real quick, the other thing is, is to agree to defer something is just talk. It, this is a contractual obligation. So either we're going to bring the contract to council and put that in the contract, or we can say, yeah, we agree, but that means nothing. So I see Suzanne has her hand up. Only for, on Councilmember Neil's behalf. Okay, so I'm gonna let Councilmember Ott speak and then go to Councilmember Neil and then we'll try to close this topic.
So I mean, I'm not an expert in this, but, but to me, it makes sense that we would move forward and we would have the same right as any other person that has bought land around that zone that's in the DDA district. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason to defer at this point.
Hang on one second. Rusty's next and then we'll go to Councilmember Connors. Rusty?
You're on mute, Rusty. I see him talking.
This is a point of information and why, why this agenda item was placed here. I've asked that you start reviewing the documents. In fact, everybody that has cited the current Second Amendment document is incorrect in what they're stating. I've pulled it up. It has never said that is substantial or anything. It states that the, the development, the DDA achieves completion of construction, not significant, not part, it is complete by December 31st, 2023, which is a physical impossibility. That is why I have asked the council members to pull these documents and start reviewing them so they understand what the final signed version says because there are other draft documents that have language that's been alluded to. But the signed approved document, the completion has to be done by December 31st, which is an impossibility. I think we need to just keep this on the back burner, bring us up to speed knowledge-wise and see what happens with the DDA. It's premature to do anything other than just read the documents.
So I just want to make a point here. So I thought Rusty, I thought I heard, sorry, Councilmember Neil, I thought I heard you say that in this item 10E, that you are not asking to defer now the transfer. You just wanted us to read the three documents. So I'm not sure why we're even discussing this. And at this point, we should just move on because we've already. If, if, since this was Councilmember Neil and Councilmember Zuluaga, are Councilmembers, Councilmember Zuluaga, are you in the same boat as Rusty now? Or do you still feel like this has to be deferred?
I think we, well firstly, what Rusty says is, is accurate. It is worthwhile, council, understanding the documents. I'm suggesting, and the reason we're bringing it to council is because according even to the letter which we got from Mark Crozier, don't die on me, computer.
I mean, my question was.
So let me answer the rest of the question. Trying to answer your question. I think we do need to consider deferring it based on, and not yet, not today. But Rusty's quite correct. We brought it to council to make council aware of it because it is a timely decision that is, will be required here in the next 30 days. From what we have from the investors, they're looking to make, to, to submit a proposal, a contract with the DDA in July, which is the first Tuesday in July. And when that occurs.
I mean, you answered my question. Thank you.
Did I? Okay, good.
I would, just one point, Taylor, you'd like to make is that the email I got is that they're bringing an offer to purchase the property in July.
And, and as a point of information, because I have received information as the liaison, there, the second group will be presenting a cash offer. So if they present a cash offer and the total concept is approved by the DDA board, then it becomes a moot point on, on deferring the, the, the date. It is irrelevant. However, if the Mike Williams project goes forward, we need to be prepared to act quickly because it will be time sensitive as they're spending money.
Okay, so the question is, is this item withdrawn to vote on? Or are you still expecting a vote?
It is a withdrawn item to vote on. It is purely informational at this time.
I would agree with that.
That's not what I understood from Councilmember Zuluaga.
Do you agree with him, Councilmember Zuluaga?
Until you have the opportunity to research the documents that Rusty's talking about, it's inappropriate to make a vote on it. So we've moved it forward. I think we've sufficiently discussed it and we can bring it back once we've had the opportunity to review the documents.
I'll, I'll just make the comment. I'll read the, view the documents when it comes time to consider in 2023.
Well, I think that you're going to jeopardize. My suggestion would be, and I don't know, I don't know what the DDA is going to do, saying we just as, we have oversight. What's happening with the DDA? Should these contracts go through or should this contract go through? Then it would be necessary to make a decision on that, council to make a decision on that before December 31st of 2023.
So we'll, we'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens.
Very good. Yeah.
Okay, so no vote will be taken on this item.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. We are at item 11. Unless there was anyone that wanted to speak. Okay, so on to item 11, which is reports and premier reports. I just have some events that I'm going to list off. So we have the farmer's market, which starts tomorrow in Memorial Park from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. Then on June 4th, we have the citywide garage sale. It'll be at Woodland Park High School and that's from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we also have on June 4th, the Teller County Sheriff's Open House. That's from 10:00 to 2:00. Then June 8th, we have the Enterprise Zone Training through the Chamber of Commerce. And if you're a business owner, it will be an interesting training for you. That will be at the Ute Pass Chamber. Sorry, the Ute Pass Cultural Center, right? Okay, and that'll be at 5:30 to 7:15 PM. And then June 8th, there's also the Community Engagement Forum with the Woodland Park Police. And that's at the Woodland Park Police Department from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And that's all I have for this evening. Councilmember Case?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a request. I believe that it is the position of the mayor to run our meetings and to direct the audience and such with regards to the meetings. And I would ask that the council honor that and allow the mayor to run the meeting. In fact, everybody that has cited the current Second Amendment document. Is incorrect in what they're stating. I've pulled it up. It has never said that is substantial or anything. It states that the the development. The DDA achieves completion of construction, not significant, not part. It is complete by December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. Which is a physical impossibility. That is why I have asked the council members to pull these documents and start. Re- reviewing them so they understand what the final signed version says. Because there are other draft documents that have language that's been alluded to, but the signed approved document. The completion has to be done by December thirty first, which is an impossibility. I think we need to just keep this on the back burner, bring us up to speed, knowledge wise, and see what happens with the DDA. It's premature to do anything other than just read the documents.
So I just want to make a point here. So I thought Rusty, I thought I heard, sorry, Councilmember Neil, I thought I heard you say that. In this item ten E, that you are not asking to defer now. The transfer, you just wanted us to read the three documents. So I'm not sure why we're even discussing this. And at this point, we should just move on because we've.
Yeah.
If 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 since this was Councilmember Neil and Councilmember Zulaga. Are Councilmembers, Councilmembers Zulaga, are you in the same boat as Rusty now, or do you still feel like this has to be deferred?
I think we, well firstly, what Rusty says is is accurate. It is worthwhile council understanding the documents. I'm suggesting, and the reason we're bringing it to council is because according even to the letter which we got from Mark Crozier. The, don't die on me, computer.
I mean, my question was.
So let me answer the rest of the questions. Trying to answer your question. I think we do need to consider deferring it based on, and not yet, not today. But Rusty's quite correct. We're brought it to council to make council aware of it. Because it is a timely decision that is will be required here in the next thirty days. From what we have from the investors, they're looking to make to 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 submit. A proposal, a contract with the DDA in July, which is the first Tuesday in July. And when that occurs.
I mean, you answered my question. Thank you.
Did I? Okay, good.
I would just one point, Taylor, I'd like to make is that the email I got is that they're bringing an offer to purchase the property in July.
And and as a point of information, because I have received information as the liaison. There the second group will be presenting a cash offer. So if they present a cash offer and the total concept is approved. By the DDA board, then it becomes a moot point on it on deferring the 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 date. It is irrelevant. However, if the Mike Williams project goes forward, we need to be prepared to act quickly. Because it will be time sensitive as they're spending money.
Okay, so the question is, is this item withdrawn to vote on? Or are you still expecting a vote?
It is a withdrawn item to vote on. It is purely informational at this time.
I would agree with that.
Not what I understood from Councilmembers.
Do you agree with him, Councilmember Zulaga?
Until you have the opportunity to research the documents that Rusty's talking about, it's inappropriate to make a vote on it. So. We've moved it forward. I think we've sufficiently discussed it and we can bring it back. Once we've had the opportunity to review the documents.
I'll just make the comment. I'll read the view the documents when it comes time to to consider in two thousand and twenty three.
Well, I think that you're going to jeopardize. My suggestion would be, and I don't know, I don't know what the DDA is going to say. We just as we have oversight. What's happening with the DDA? Should these contracts go through or should this contract go through? Then it would be necessary to make a decision on that, council to make a decision on that before December thirty first of two thousand and twenty three.
So we'll we'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens.
Very good. Yeah.
Okay, so no vote will be taken on this item.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. We are at item eleven. Unless there was anyone that wanted to speak. Okay, so on to item eleven, which is reports and premier reports. I just have some. Events that I'm going to list off. So we have the farmer's market, which starts tomorrow in Memorial Park from eight AM until one PM. Then on June fourth, we have the citywide garage sale that'll be at Woodland Park High School, and that's from seven AM to two PM. And we also have on June fourth, the Teller County Sheriff's Open House, and that's from ten to two. Then June eighth, we have the Enterprise Zone Training through the Chamber of Commerce. And if you're a business owner. It will be an interesting training for you. That will be at the Ute Pass Chamber. Sorry, the Ute Pass Cultural Center, right? Okay, and that'll be at five thirty to seven fifteen PM. And then June eighth, there's also the Community Engagement Forum with the Woodland Park Police. And that's at the Woodland Park Police Department from six to seven thirty PM. And that's all I have for this evening. Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a request. I believe that it is the position of the mayor to run our meetings. And to direct the audience and such with regards to the meetings. And I would ask that the council honor that and allow the mayor to run the meeting and the conduct of the meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Although sometimes they do need a little help, especially with public comment. Councilmember Connors.
Just one thing, Mayor, we had a very good turnout for the Memorial Day Veterans at the cemetery. So that was a good turnout. I appreciate the council members in the city that attended.
Councilmember Nikai. So I have one, Main Street. We we've talked, I've talked to Gail and Lori and. Since we didn't get to discuss it too much in detail at the retreat, we thought it might be a good idea to have a workshop between council. Main Street and get Dola involved so that we can all understand what the purpose of Main Street is and how we can best. Deal with it for the vision going forward.
Okay, very good. So we can work on that with Michael and.
And I've actually already been in touch with Gail Langley from Dola, who has expressed her, it's a little dated now, but. Email a little while ago, expressed her availability to come meet with the council, perhaps at a work session before council meeting. On the dates in July and August. So we can we can see if that works. I was thinking maybe one of the dates in July.
Sounds good. And that's all I have. Councilmember Ott.
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor, but my first committee meeting will be here this week, so.
Very good.
All right.
All right, Councilmember Zulaga.
I have nothing to report. The meeting that was held this evening didn't have a quorum, so.
All right.
Pick it up again.
City Attorney.
The funeral, the.
I forgot, I forgot.
Rusty.
Rusty, sorry.
That's okay. Simple. I I do not have any any meetings to report on.
Thank you, sorry.
So so at the funeral, the widow asked the deceased's best friend, would you like to say a word? And the best friend says, well, of course, I'd be happy to, and stands up and he goes. Plethora. And sits down and the widow turns to the best friend and says, thank you. That really means a lot.
I thought you were just gonna say word. Michael.
I like it because it takes me off the hook. We we talked about a lot of numbers tonight, and I know it's hard for a lot of people. Did you know that five fourths of people are bad at math? With that, we we actually do have one more thing, and it does involve numbers. Aaron can go as quickly or slowly as you like. He has some. Year end numbers for two thousand and twenty one. He will try and be brief. Although he's going the wrong direction. Or the right direction, depending on how you look at it.
Rob's getting it set up. We'll be ready momentarily here. All right, tonight I have for you the two thousand and twenty one year end report review of where we ended up last year. These numbers are unaudited, but we don't expect them to change too much. These first two slides that I have are just a recap of where we had budgeted for twenty one originally. So I'm going to skip through these unless you have any questions on the percentages, but nothing's changed since the last time you guys have seen these. I'm going to jump right into slide three. Or slide four, actually, I'm sorry, which is the general fund summary. So in the budget for two thousand and twenty one, we started off the year with a fund balance of three thousand, three million, seven hundred and thirty one, three hundred and seventy. Dollars. And when we got the audited numbers back, it was actually three million, eight, eight, nine, seven, one, seven. Which are the numbers we use for the twenty one to twenty two budget preparation, sorry. Revenues, as we saw at the end of last year when we presented this, we knew that revenues were going to be way up. So we had thirteen million, one oh eight, five thirty eight, which was a twelve percent increase over the previous year. And when we did the two thousand and twenty two budget, we had looked at it and thought it was going to be thirteen million, zero eighty three. So we were within about twenty thousand of our revenue projection, which is pretty pretty good, I think. When we talk about how difficult it is to project, so. We were twenty thousand over what we projected in the two thousand and twenty two budget expenditures. We were, yeah, that's in the right direction, exactly. Expenditures, the original budget was about eleven million, seven hundred thousand, and we actually ended up at eleven million, one hundred and thirty nine. In the budget, we had actually projected eleven million, seven oh five, because we had done the supplemental for Cola. So we actually had a huge savings there of almost six hundred thousand dollars. And it was essentially all salary savings. As we talked about tonight with the compensation study, there was a reason that we we went so aggressively, and it's because we had tremendous staff shortages. So our ending fund balance was. Five million, eight hundred and fifty eight thousand, as opposed to the three point seven million that was originally projected. And when we did the year end numbers for the twenty two budget, we had five point two million, so it was the six hundred thousand savings. I do want to remind council, we did already allocate a million dollars of this towards the debt when we did. Supplemental last year. Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I said, I turned to Kelly and I said, it looks like maybe you and Frank could finally order new chairs. And then it caused a ruckus.
I appreciate that.
Oh, there you go. So I'm sorry, Aaron. Okay, we'll go back on track so we can get out of here.
Yeah, so pick up where you left off with that one million we allocated. Go ahead.
So we we already had allocated a million dollars towards the debt service in twenty two. And most of this money has already been programmed into the two thousand and twenty two budget, if you're wondering what we did with all that access. Any questions on this one? Okay. Do you guys want me to go into detail on the expenditures and revenues? No, okay. Is there any specific questions you have that you've reviewed already? No, everything looks great. All right. I love to hear that.
Everything's in the right direction.
So Aaron, I'll ask you some questions offline.
All right, thank you all. That's all I got.
All right, then. Meetings adjourned. Thank you very much.